We have a public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2023 budget and 2022 property tax rate. I call the meeting to order. If I can have Mr. Rangel do roll call for us, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam President, Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge J. Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Devin Ramos? Absent. Cynthia Amares? Absent. On her way. Judge Martinez Jr., present. Dr. Henry Carranza? Absent. Dr. Angel, present. Karina Lizondo? Absent. Tita Cantubella?
On her way.
On her way.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Number three, the next item is public hearing on proposed fiscal year 2023 budget and 2022 property tax rate. Mr. Cesare Ivela?
Good afternoon. I am Lupita Cepeda, President of the Laredo College Board of Trustees. Today is August 25th, 2022, and the time is 6:07 PM. We are convening a duly noticed public hearing on the proposed 2022 Laredo College property tax rate and the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. I will preside as Chair of the hearing and I'll call roll, which we've already done. As background information for the public, the Laredo College Board of Trustees caused to be published on August 15th, 2022, a notice of tonight's public hearing on the Laredo College proposed property tax rate for year 2022 as required by the Texas Tax Code, Chapter 26. The Laredo College 2022 property tax rate is proposed to be set at 0.287836 per 100 valuation of taxable property, of which 0.230196 shall be for maintenance and operations and 0.057640 shall be for debt retirement. If the Board of Trustees approves the proposed property tax rate, this tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. Our public hearing today allows the proponents and opponents of the 2022 tax rate and the fiscal year 2023 budget to present their views to the Board of Trustees. Are there any members of the public here today who wish to express their views regarding the proposed 2022 property tax rate and the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget to the Board of Trustees? If so, please approach the podium one at a time. The Board will allow each proponent and opponent up to three minutes of time to present his or her views. According to Board of Trustees' policy, CC local, no officer or employee from the college is required to respond to questions from speakers. Please proceed to the podium. Do we have anyone here to speak?
Madam Chair, let the record reflect that Mestita Vela has joined.
That's the 29th.
Thank you, Ms. Vela. At this time, I would also like to cover that it was probably, the notice was published by Ms. Patricia Varela in the newspaper and we have, they have given us a copy of it, that it has been published as per the guidelines that are required. Thank you. So the Board of Trustees is scheduled to adopt the, so we don't have anyone, is that correct? No? Apparently not. Okay. Thank you. So I'm going to proceed. The Board of Trustees is scheduled to adopt the Laredo College proposed 2022 property tax rate and the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget during the Board's regular meeting, which immediately follows the conclusion of this public hearing. This concludes the Laredo College Public Hearing on the proposed 2022 property tax rate and the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing. So I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This public hearing is now closed. Thank you. So now I'm going to go ahead and start with our regular board meeting. The time is 6:11. This is the 25th day of August 2022 and I call this meeting, the Laredo College Board of Trustees, to order. If I can have Dr. Ramirez say the prayer and then Mr. Martinez pledge your allegiance, please. Can you all stand?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for bringing us together today in a spirit of generosity and camaraderie. May we honor one another by keeping an open mind. May we, may we voice our truth and listen with an open heart. May we discern your will to unite in a fruitful outcome. We ask that you bless us this evening as we make decisions about the future of our Laredo College. We thank you for all the blessings and the rain. In your name we pray.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez and Mr. Martinez. If I can have Mr. Rangel, could you please call roll?
Yes, Madam President. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Thank you. Jorge J. Delgado?
Present.
Thank you. Jackie Devin Ramos? Absent. Miss Cynthia Amares? Judge Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Dr. Henry Carranza? Absent.
Absent.
Dr. Angel, present. Karina Lizondo? Absent. Tita Cantubella?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of minutes for the regular board meeting.
Don't move.
So, let me just read the, let the record show that a form of a board member is present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. So I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of July 28th, 2022, special board meeting of August 5th, and a special board meeting of August 9th. And I have a second by Mr. Rangel. Any discussion? None heard? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item I have is public testimony. We have none. Thank you.
Madam Chair, like me?
Yes.
I'd like to bring up the item number seven, consent agenda. I want a motion to approve 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, 7G, 7H.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Ms. Modis, to approve the consent agenda, 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, 7F, 7G, and 7H. Any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Chair recognizes Mr. Delgado.
Just to reflect on agenda item 7F, the approval going into contract with Oracle, no levers. Is that one good to go? Or was that one supposed to be deferred?
Madam Chair? Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Yes, sir. Mr. Delgado, we received a sole source contract from them and it's all been taken care of. We'll be happy to share the contract with each of you again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item we have is discussion of possible action, which is 8A fiscal year 2023 budget and 2022 property tax rate. Mr. Cesare Vela?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the Board. Dr. Ramirez, for the record, Cesare Vela, Vice President of Finance. You received a copy of the proposed 2023 budget. As we discussed at the board retreat, the budget for the fiscal year 2023 is being proposed to be $66,290,455. Again, you have a copy of the booklet at this time. If the Board has any questions, I'd...
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair.
To have a motion?
I motion that Laredo College Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution adopting the fiscal year 2023 budget.
I have a motion by Mr. Rangel, I have a second by Ms. Modis. Any discussion? Just a minute. Chair recognizes Mr. Mayor.
And I apologize, board members, if I missed this, but was the resolution read aloud to the public?
Yeah.
We had it all read aloud, okay. We're good to vote?
Yes. So? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item is 8A2, resolution adopting 2022 property tax rate. Mr. Vela?
Yes, board members, the proposed tax rate that is being recommended for the 2023 fiscal year, which will support the operations of the budget, is 0.287836. This, the proposed tax rate will raise more tax revenue for this fiscal year. Approximately $2,959,26 additional revenue will be collected if the tax rate is proposed, or very adopted.
Madam Chair?
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangel.
Thank you. I motion that the property tax rate be increased by the, by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.287836 per $100 valuation of taxable property, of which 0.230196 shall be for maintenance and operation and 0.057640 shall be for debt retirement, which is effectively a 3.5% increase in the tax rate and the, and that the bond for the Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution which adopts the tax rate 2022 property tax rate.
I have a motion. Point order. Chair recognizes Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Madam Chair. So before the Board votes on this motion, we're required to read the resolution out loud so that the public is aware of what it is that we're adopting. And then in regards to voting on this particular motion, we'll need a record vote. So I recommend that each board member individually state his or her vote. Again, first, let's read the resolution.
Do I have the resolution?
Leave that a copy of the resolution left.
Can I just get a second and then we'll have, what do we need to read?
Can I get a second on the motion? Madam Chair?
Yes, of course.
Okay, so I have a motion of Mr. Rangel and I have a second by Ms. Modis. So the discussion, I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution of Laredo College District Board of Trustees, adopting property tax rate for fiscal year 2023. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District, in order to maybe add the Laredo taxes, is required to set and establish the tax rate each year. Whereas said Board of Trustees conducted a public hearing on August 25th, 2022, on the property tax rate in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Tax Code. And whereas such Board of Trustees has considered this matter and decides to set the 2022 property tax rate, be it resolved therefore, then that on August 25th, 2022, the 2022 property tax rate be, and the same is hereby set at 0.287836 per $100 valuation of taxable property, of which 0.230196 shall be for maintenance and operations and 0.057640 shall be for debt retirement. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by three and a half percent and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately negative $38.61. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax officials designated by Laredo College, adopted on this 25th day of August 2022 by the Board of Trustees. So now I can ask for the vote? Okay. So I need each individual to go ahead and, and vote. So, Mr. Martinez?
Yes.
Mr. Rangel?
Yes.
Ms. Modis?
Yes.
Mr. Cepeda, yes. Ms. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
So I have, the, the motion is a yes. Do I have any opposing? No. So, motion carries. Resolution. Yes.
I would like to make a point to let the community know that there is a drop in the tax rate from last year.
Right. Correct. Not raised. We didn't raise it. We dropped it. Yes.
Yeah. The tax...
Right. So, motion is approved and firms and Martinez, the tax went down a little bit. The rate. The rate. The rate went down.
It is for the rate.
The rate.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item I have is 883, authorizing collection of general use fee and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 2023. Mr. Vela?
Yes, members of the Board. The next item is for the Board to adopt the resolution authorizing the collection of the general use fee and the expenditure of funds for fiscal year 2023.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, do I have another resolution?
Yes. I'll have to read that. But where is it?
Where is it?
I believe that all the resolutions were left on the board and shared or discussed.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So the resolution authorizing collection of general use fee and expenditure of funds for fiscal year 2023. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District is authorized to fix and collect tuition and fees from students for the use of its property, buildings, and facilities. And whereas such Board of Trustees has deemed it necessary and advisable to collect a general use fee from students for the use of its property, buildings, and facilities, and to apply such proceeds to the payment of principal and interest of certain revenue bonds issued and sold in 2015, 2016, 2017, and 2020 for expenses generally associated with construction, reconstruction, remodeling, and repair of its property, buildings, and facilities. And whereas such Board of Trustees has determined that such general use fee should be set at $50 per semester credit hour for fiscal year 2023 to be used as follows. Approximately $4,324,367 for revenue bond debit service. Approximately $500,000 to be retained as general revenue for expenses related to physical plant operations and maintenance. Third, the balance for payment of construction, reconstruction, remodeling, and repair of property, buildings, and facilities. Be it resolved therefore, that... Be it resolved therefore, that a general use fee be collected from students at the time of registration in the amount of fifty dollars per semester credit hour for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Adopted on this twenty-fifth day of August, twenty twenty-second by the Board of Trustees. So do I have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mr. Rangail.
I move that Laredo College Board of Trustees trustee is approved and adopted resolution authorizing the collection of general use fee and expenditures of of funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second? So I have a second by Ms. Martinez. Any discussion? None heard. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Chair recognizes Mr. Mayor.
Madam Chair, it was brought to my attention that the actual resolution, the one that adopts the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three had not been read. I know the motion was read, but the resolution did not. So if you permit me, I can read that out just so that the public is aware that this is the resolution for adoption.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution adopting budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Whereas each year, the Board of Trustees of Laredo College District is required to have a budget prepared showing the estimated revenue and proposed expenditures for the succeeding school year and to cause the same to be filed in accordance with the rules and regulations prescribed by the Texas Higher Education Board. And whereas such a budget has been prepared and the public has been given notice that such budget would be presented for discussion and adoption on August twenty-five, twenty twenty-two at the time and place specified in such notice. And whereas such budget has been discussed by a majority of the Board of Trustees and they wish to adopt same for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Be it resolved therefore, that the budget be adopted and same is hereby adopted in all things. And it's adopted on this twenty-fifth day of August, twenty twenty-two by the Board of Trustees. Madam Chair, the board has already acted on that motion, so we don't need to act on that again. Just reading the resolution is sufficient at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And just for the record, that was for eight, A one, right, Mr. Mayor?
That is correct, sir.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Rangail. Next item, I am going to make a motion to defer executive session, which would be ten A and ten B.
I'll move.
So I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. Rangail. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And it'll be deferred until a different date, Mr. Mayor. You would let us know. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, I will. I'll work with Dr. Ramirez on that date and we'll notify them. And I believe also eleven, items eleven would be-
Items eleven, A and eleven B as well. Do I need a motion? Okay, so I have a motion by Mr. Martinez. I have a second by Ms. Martinez. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yeah, we're gonna go back. Okay, that's fine. So we're gonna go back to number five for recognitions, communications, introductions of personnel. Thank you. And new personnel actions for the month. Five A, introduction of personnel, personnel actions. Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my pleasure to introduce some of our new employees and and some of our employees who have who have recently been moved to a new position and promoted. And so I'd like to start with Mr. Ms. Cassandra Arredondo, Environmental Health and Safety Coordinator. Cassandra, for her to promote. Um, Mr. Miguel A. Contreras Martinez, Mathematics Instructor. He's a new hire. Mr. David Dimas, he's also a new hire, Homeland Security Studies Instructor. Linda Gaminas, for her to promotion assessment and Q E P coordinator. As you know, we're coming up on our fifth year review, so Linda, thank you. Mr. Alfredo Garcia Junior, Auto Body Collision and Paint Technology Instructor. Welcome, sir. Most impressive, I saw his portfolio and things and I I was able to sit and visit with him. Mr. Rafael, we're very excited that you're here and look forward to some great things in the auto body shop. Um, Dr. Marisa Jimenez, a position title change, Professor of Bachelor's of Science in Nursing and Program Director. Is she not with us? Oh, she's in class, sorry. And Dr. Michael Martinez, for him, it's also a position title change, Assistant Professor of Associate Degree, Nursing and Program Director, Michael. As you know, we had the the welcome for the the new program last week and so we got to meet all of our new candidates and and Dr. Martinez did an outstanding job with his team back there with Dr. Miller and so thank you all very much. Ms. Alma L. Edwards, she's a new hire with Fire Science Instructor. And I'm gonna read out a couple of other names that weren't able to join us, but Mr. Rafael A. Limon, he's a Writing Support Specialist and Alejandro Casillas, Culinary Arts Instructor, instructor, new hire as well. They couldn't join us tonight, but we're equally excited to have all of our new employees on on staff and look forward to wonderful things this year. Thank you all very much for being here. And if if you'll stick around, we'll take a picture at the end, okay? Unless you wanna do that now.
We can do it now. Congratulations and thank you for joining our family, the new hires. We're excited to have you here and we congratulate the ones that got different titles and everything. Thank you so much for everything that you do for our college and we look forward to working with all of you, our board, our board members. Anyways, we're gonna take the picture. I'm gonna take it now, okay?
And if I may add an additional congratulations to Dr. Michael Martinez, he just finished his doctorate degree and so we're very excited for him. Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I would also like to announce or or just let the some of the board members who weren't able to join us today. We had a beautiful ceremony this morning dedicating a bench for Dr. Sara Carrasco, who is no stranger to this board and and to our Laredo College family. And her family was here. Many of our our employees were with us this morning as, you know, we commemorated her her life and celebrated her life here on our campus. And so we wanna thank all of our staff members who helped put that together. It was spearheaded by Dr. Dan Ortiz and and her team. Our physical plant guys did a beautiful job in in putting the palomino back up and everything. And so I want to take a moment to just recognize them for their efforts and thank them. We put it together in just a few short days and everyone was very pleased and so thank you for attending. Thank you, Mr. Martinez and and Ms. Martinez for being here with us. I know it meant a great deal to the family and to our employees who who knew Dr. Carrasco for for many years. I also wanna take a moment to to let you all know that we kicked off the semester this fall and great things are happening on campus. We we see a lot more excitement on campus. We're still working through some of the details and glitches, but we're we're moving forward and and we're taking care of them. We know that students have been reaching out to to all of us about different things and ebooks, either the the ebooks seem to be the the issue of the day, but I think once we get everybody used to using their ebooks and our open stacks because they they're free, make it much more economical for our students. And so if you hear anything, please let us know. We wanna make sure that that we take care of that. And and I wanna thank all of our our faculty and and staff who are really kicking off the year on on a great foot. It it all turned out, I think, well, considering that we've had some very strange weather to start the semester. Everybody's been been doing their very best to to get it all together. And if I may call, I don't know if this is the time, but I know that we have our Faculty Senate President present as well.
That was my next item.
And and so, you know, just to thank the staff and the faculty really because everyone put their best foot forward. There's a lot of energy on campus now on both of our campuses. And and I think it's attributed to the fact that everybody's looking forward to to some great successes this year. Thank you.
And and I saw that energy at the South Campus. I saw a lot of students back walking around, parents with the students. So it was really, really nice to see that. So the next item I have is the Faculty Senate Report. Ash Masahani?
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Let me start off with the first item I have on my report, which is, I don't have a presentation to him delivering it orally. So first of all, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Miranda Ramirez on her investiture ceremony. I believe the ceremony was a great opportunity, not only to recognize the work and accomplishments of our new president, but also to remind the college of its purpose and its mission, which is, of course, to serve our students and to unite around a common purpose, which is education. So congratulations on a very good investiture and a ceremony that really brought the college together again around the purpose that it really needs to revolve itself around. I also wanted to take a moment to commend all of the faculty who are teaching classes to thousands of students across Laredo College, but not just here on campus. We know that we have faculty from L C as one of the adjuncts that are teaching in high schools across the city, including Nixon High School, Martin High School, United High School, Alexander High School, San Agustin High School. And so we have faculty traveling, not just to L C every morning, but as well as to institutions across the city. And we all know it's not necessarily a a role that they may have signed up for or something, maybe it was conveyed to them. So the fact that they're doing that every day is is for the institution and for its students is a great thing. And I'm one of them too, so I know it's not easy to to kind of put yourself in an environment that you weren't necessarily prepared for, but you do it for the students and for the institution. And then the last item on my agenda, a bit mute at this point, since things kind of historical changed here. But I will say, I guess in retrospect, to thank the board for considering the budget earlier, hopefully we can also have the opportunity now to see, once we kind of have a closer look at what was approved today, perhaps take a look and see if times improve in the days ahead, months ahead, months ahead, is there an addendum that we can add to that to to tack on something more if possible. And I think with having said that, I think it's important to state and I wanted to say in conclusion here that I did have a very good discussion with Dr. Ramirez last night about where we're headed and I offered to roll up our sleeves as faculty and really as employees and try to tackle those biggest problems that we have as an institution, which is increasing our enrollment and providing even better services. So when I offer that, I mean it with all sincerity and so forth. And so we look forward, not just to ask for something here and in the road down the future, but to be part of what it takes to sustain these requests, right? It sometimes seems like it's a lot about the money, but definitely in it for the long haul, which is to roll up the sleeves and get to that hard work of rebuilding or building upon what we already have and increasing enrollment together with our new president and our administration. So again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. The next item that we have is number nine, information item, Laredo College Website Update. Mr. Albert Chavez?
Good evening, members of the board, Madam Chair, Madam President. I wanted to provide you tonight, actually, for the record, Albert Chavez, Senior Director of Information Technology. Wanted to provide you today an up an update regarding our college website. Let me just get the computer and use that up. Sorry, somebody closed it earlier. Let me reload the page. So our our team has been very busy working with the faculty and with the staff of the institution in finalizing the website. We run into some issues over the summer getting some departments to help us finalize some of the content. So we had to extend our goal live date. So right now, I'm showing you the the front page of the website with content. It doesn't have sample text and so forth like I had in the prior meeting. So we have finished our 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 top navigation. So on the top navigation, we do have our quick links to a opportunity to enroll, access to our passport portal, our directory, jobs at the campus. And on our main navigation, we did some improvements. So we have a section with about L C where you'll find information about the college, the mission, institution, accreditation, Board of Trustees, administration, community resources, the campus news, calendar, and a campus map. Then the second navigation menu is called Admissions and Aid. Again, we have our quick link for students to apply, red information about registration and admissions, financial aid, our course catalog, classes, student enrollment, recruitment, new student orientation, assessment center, academic calendar, and advising center, and then soon to come, a virtual tour of the campus. So that'll be added very soon. Our programs, again, for any future students to learn about our degrees or certificates, our workforce education, online and distance learning and continuing education. Then the last side, the second to the last item, second, Student Services. We have our Student Handbook, access to the library, our centers, upward one upward bound program, student support services, special services, Assessment Center and Advising. And then the last link, which is Campus Life for our students, access to the Office of Student Life and then for our Recreation Center. We do have, again, our our rotation of images. Right now, we're looking at the One for Culinary Arts and it has the title and then applied today. And we have a various images that'll be refreshed throughout the academic year. Again, here's another program, Learning Technologies, Networking Technologies and so forth. So we've been working with public relations to update our listing of images here. And as we scroll down, we have some information about financial aid, our cost assessment later, and more information about our programs. Links for future students, that'll take you to a page with more information about the college, a link for current students to go access resources that they need as a current student. More information here, start here, go anywhere, some accolades for the institution, accredited, transferable courses and so forth, reaching us online via phone or in person. As we scroll down, we will be refreshing this information with our our latest highlight for the college. Right now, again, this already occurred, but here's the, this will take you to a new story for our open house that we have here at Laredo College, a story about the LEAP's program and then a sign, a donation that was done to the college by the consulate office. So we'll be working with a public relations to refresh these these articles. Again, right here, we're highlighting students slash alumni in cases- Again, right here, we're highlighting students slash alumni, in case this particular alumni is a faculty member here. So, alumni returns makes a difference, so if you click on the link, it'll take you to the story. More information about the college, some statistics, and then right here, we are highlighting an actual academic program. So, here, in this particular example, the cybersecurity program, and this is a particular story that was highlighted very recently by the PR department. And then just some information about our two campuses, again, programs and majors, online learning, in our footer with additional information. I wanted to point out something really quick that we are working on. We are revamping, and again, the stories are being updated right now, but we are, we created a news page for the campus, so PR has this new updated page that they're gonna be able to set up to highlight news stories, so currently today on the website, we have the linking of the stories, and you click on it, it takes you to the article. Now, they're gonna have this dedicated site for them, and they'll have, each story will have tags or categories that we can use to further break them down. So, this will be instrumental for them to be able to share this information also with local media, so this will be a site that will be for PR to be able to share that information. And again, these stories will work with public relations to highlight them on the main page. I think I covered the majority, the deadline that we have given departments that we can finish is September the 12th, and that's on the Monday. Actually, we have given departments an earlier deadline, because our goal is to go live on September the 12th, which is on Monday. So, on Sunday night, we will transition to the new web server, and we'll go live on September the 12th. That's our goal, so we do have a couple of departments that we are providing additional training and support, so we can get them to finish updating the content. But I'll show you, I mean, we do have a lot of the information here, so some information about the campus, the history, mission of the campus, I mean, has been updated, a lot of the content has already been updated, accreditation information, board of trustees. So, we have all the information that's been updated, so we have been doing a lot of work to get this finalized. We did acquire a new campus calendar solution. Apologize, it hasn't loaded. But we did acquire a new campus calendar that we're gonna be using throughout the institution to be able to highlight events here at the campus, maybe I clicked on the wrong one. I apologize. But I know that there, we actually have a calendar that we purchased recently by the name of Trumba. It's, and it allows us to highlight events at the institution, so that information will be there in the same catalog. I mean, the same system is with use to set up our academic calendar. I apologize, I don't know why it's not loading today.
That's okay.
But I'll open it up for any feedback or comments, I mean, we're really close to the finishing line. It's been a lot, a large effort, especially in working with departments and updating the information. So, we didn't launch in August because we had some outdated information that needed to be refreshed, so we have to extend that deadline. But now, we're confident that on September the 12th, we can go live, and we will have the information updated from all the departments.
Any questions?
Very good.
Very good. Very, very good.
And if I may, Madam Chair, the work that they've been doing to try to get this up, I mean, we've been putting a lot of pressure on the team, but but to keep it updated, the key thing here is, so we have a new website, how do we make it work for the benefit of our of our current students, our future students, and our employees, and so the ideal thing is that everybody needs to take responsibility, each department, for their own pages, to make sure that they stay current and make sure that they're updating photographs and that, you know, we keep, we keep it going, because if not, and, you know, very quickly, this will be outdated again, and then we'll be back to the drawing board, so I do wanna thank the departments for doing their due diligence and getting all this information going, and so we'll be also scheduling like photo shoots and things like that, so that we can keep our pictures up to date and current.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You're welcome, and as one other item, I mean, this is an iterative process, so we're gonna continue updating, we receive the request to soon after we go live, to also add the capability to translate the website into other languages, so we're looking into doing that, so that way, if somebody wants to translate it into Spanish, we'll have the capability for the website to be, there'll be a dropdown box that'll allow you to select the language, and then it'll translate into that specific language. That's a new request that's come to us, I mean, and it's pretty common, I mean, a lot of the school districts here locally have that functionality, some other websites do. So, we're gonna look at that capability and add it to the website in the near future.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Anything else?
No.
You gave up the door, thank you. So, the next item is 12 presidents' reports, so we have 12A, campus police, personnel travel, and other reports, and then 12B will be enrollment report. So, we'll start with 12A.
Yes, ma'am. And so, for campus police, we don't have anything to report, I think things are going well, our campus police has been doing their due diligence and making sure that traffic flows smoothly at both of our campuses, and so we have not had, we haven't had anything there, which is a huge blessing. The personnel, we just introduced you to some of our new employees, but certainly, I wanna reiterate what I mentioned earlier, that our current employees are all I think excited and moving forward, and we're very excited to have everyone back on campus and seeing all the activity. Travel, and if you all know, the fall is usually very, very heavy travel, there we've got different people going to different meetings at the coordinating board at the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities is in October, and that's, so that's coming up. We also have the SACS meeting later in the fall as well, and so we're planning, we're getting ready for all of that and making sure that we adhere to our timelines and get registered early, so that we can save a little bit of money, but some of these programs are pertinent to the success of our students and our faculty, and and we wanna make sure that our staff is up to date with what's the latest out in the field, and so we wanna make sure that we're able to send folks to these trainings to bring back the latest and greatest to our campus, and make sure we're consistent. And that's all I have at this point. I, 12B is.
Thank you, Dr. Solis. On the enrollment report, Dr. Solis. Enrollment report, Dr. Fred Solis.
What do you mean, Madam President, board members, team board members, Madam President, colleagues. Fred Solis, for the record, vice president for student success and enrollment. Tonight's enrollment report is to give a status of where we are with our enrollment, our fourth class day is today, but we continue to receive students and register them on a case by case basis. From the Saturday workshop, I'm glad to present that back then, on Saturday, we were 15% behind last year. Today, we're, we cut that almost in half, so we're about 7% behind. We've registered close to 200 students that are non-dual students, whereas for the dual credit, we enrolled an additional 500 students, so every day that goes by continues to increase our numbers. In terms of semester credit hours, which is what determines the funding from our students, tuition and fees, the semester credit hours are at 49,623 currently, which is putting us about 3,800 behind where we were last year. In terms of our continuing education programs, our quarter four is still, will end next week, at the end of August. Currently, we were showing that we had a dip in our enrollment compared to last year, but the upside of this, or the positive side of this, is that we had an uptick in our contact hours, which is probably funding is generated off the stage, or some of the 3% increase in contact hours funding for quarter four. Currently, continuing ed is now opening for registration for quarter one, and so although the numbers here look very bleak, I just wanna call attention that this is very, very early, they just opened the quarter one registration, and so courses haven't started yet, and they'll begin in September. But as soon as quarter four ends, you know, quarter one will take off, and with all the scheduled courses at that time. Are there any questions?
No. No questions?
No.
Thank you, Dr. Solis. I'm glad the numbers went up from last week. Thank you.
That's very good.
For making it end, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is number 13. Our next meeting date is Thursday, September 29th, at 6:00 PM, regular board of trustees meeting. And Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez, before you return, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, I just wanted the record to reflect that I wish to recite my vote for item 8A1, which is the resolution adopting fiscal year 2023 budget from yes to no. That is all, thank you.
Mr. Muir?
Yes, it still passes, correct, that there's.
Okay.
Vote.
But it's been noted that he was sending his vote.
That's right, that's correct, and it could be reflected in the minutes as well.
Okay. So, on that note, I don't have one, two, three, four, we can adjourn?
We had, I'd like to add something. I'm sorry, I do wanna thank the board, though, for adopting our budget and tax rate, and along with that was a 3% increase for all of our employees who have, who have been with us and have a satisfactory evaluation, and so I didn't want the meeting to end without thanking the board, because I know that 3% means a great deal to our employees, and so we wanna certainly appreciate that. The tax rate, well, we have to keep in mind that that drop, as Mr. Martinez pointed out, the offset to that was that the Webb County appraisal district did increase appraisals, and so we were able to drop that tax rate, so I just wanted to point that out, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Anything else? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
So, I have a motion by Ms. Vela, and a second by Mr. Martinez, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.